I think the council members who are coming are here. There's some food over there, anybody wants to grab some of it? It's, uh, it's, uh, belongs to the citizens of Baskerville. For such as the Texas Governor Code Chapter 551, the City Council of Baskerville, Texas, will hold a special workshop meeting on Tuesday, November 17th, 2015, 6:00 PM. At the Baskerville City Hall Council Chavers, 1311 Chestnut Street, Baskerville, Texas. To consider the following matters. First is call to order, I call to order. We have a forum present. Uh, we may not have, uh, council member, Act Valley, or council member, uh, Mayor Prochey, and Donald Russell with us tonight for personal reasons. So we have a full forum here, a, um, a meeting coming up, and we will move into it. First, we're gonna deal with a matter that inadvertently got left off last meeting at the end up. Just need to wrap it up. Item number two is consideration discussion, possible action regarding approval of the first amendment to the amended and restated excess flood consent agreement pertaining to the excess range flood slash pit development located at the city's UTEC.
Thank you, Mayor. At last council meeting, we approved the developer's agreement, but as you stated, the consent was left off. We did make some clarifications to item number one. I think there was some concern that the previous language might have caused a little confusion. And so I think this clarifies that. And so I would recommend approval, and also directly to change the language in the development agreement to coincide with the language in the consent agreement for item number one.
Let me ask if, uh, see if I can channel the Mayor Prochey one second, just to make sure that anything we do with the pit and their bonds and all that kind of stuff, uh, responsibility falls on the landowners of that pit, not the city of Baskerville. Is that correct?
Right. We are just the vehicle for which the statute requires that the bonds be issued. Um, I would say probably the biggest risk holders are your bondholders. Um, that's why you'll probably typically see a little bit higher interest rate that there would be those bonds than typical municipal bonds that are taxed back through the tax rate. Um, but there is no, under the statute, if there is a default, the fault does not fall out of the city.
Council members, I'm going to approve the first amendment.
Sorry?
With changing the language for the development agreement?
Yeah, form.
Okay. Uh, several voices there. Do you think you got all that? Uh, council members, whether what the motion is in a second. Uh, I don't think it makes it hard to speak, so would you please call the law?
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. That concludes...
Yes, sir. That takes care of that, and we have Mr. Landor take care of now for a while. He'll be back.
Thank you. Our primary, uh, we didn't make you wait all night, did we, John?
No.
That's gotta be worth something. The primary purpose of our meeting tonight is to comply with our, uh, resolution passed by the City Council several weeks ago, for us to have a workshop session to talk about the expenditure of hotel occupancy tax money, uh, income that we have with the number of... Hi, Kay, come on in, Johnny. So glad you're here. Hope everything's okay. Um, the purpose, uh, to have some expert folks here to help us with it, provide to work out some details about how we can begin to work the process of dealing with the hog money, as we call it, under changed circumstances, looking, in my mind at least, looking ahead as far as I can look ahead, 10 years to spending $30 million or more, the fact that we need to make sure we get this right. I circulated the letters to the council, I think summarized, uh, what they were thinking as well, because I never heard back from anyone. Items under A describe some of the broad brush issues that I think we have to deal with as we go forward. I believe that it's, uh, tonight's meeting is an opportunity for us to recognize our responsibilities and to begin to lay the groundwork for a process that will lead us through whatever it takes to come up with the form that the council will decide on to provide for the expenditure of hog funds under possibly new circumstances and new direction. So with that said, uh, in Mike's charge before him, I'll call the city manager to introduce our presentation.
Yes.
So we're convening into a workshop session?
Well, we are. We're invited to as workshop sessions, so we're convening with that. Thank you, uh, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. Um, the council, uh, previously, a few months ago, uh, directed me to find, uh, a group or individual or an entity to, I think, as we hit a crossroads of where we go with the hotel, motel tax by the number of items that are listed here, um, to come in and talk to us and, um, help us get our hands around this and maybe set a path of, of, of what we should be thinking about, not only for today, but, um, five years down the road, and what decisions do we need to be making today that will impact five years down the road. Um, I do want to say upfront that I want to give credit where credits due. Uh, we would not have such a fine outstanding group tonight to present to council if it wasn't for Ms. Kim Britton out of the Hyatt. Uh, she's had to put up with me for the last few months, and, uh, but she has been a real, uh, motivating force in working with me and helping get this put together for tonight. And Kim, I can't thank you enough. With that, uh, Kim did put together a meeting, and I met with, uh, some members of the Texas Travel Industry Association. Uh, we met for well over two hours at the convention center, uh, just walked out of their basically scuttle on with the wealth of information, uh, that we discussed in a very short period of time. And I think that the council will be equally intrigued and find their presentation tonight of the utmost value as we go forward. So at this time, I would like to introduce Mr. David Teal. Uh, Mr. Teal is president and CEO of the Texas Travel Industry Association. Uh, they're one of the most respected, uh, organization in the travel and tourism and hospitality areas, and, uh, we're just, uh, very honored to have you all here tonight. Thank you. Honored with your presence, and we're looking forward to what you have to tell us. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council members, for allowing us to be here tonight. Can you hear me well?
Let's ask the people in the back.
Can you hear me? Anybody here who's listening out? Awesome. That's great. But I have a lot of air in my mouth. I tend to like, I probably raise a bad business, you know, insurance, so I kinda like to use the space that's available to me if I can.
If you can speak directly into the mic.
I had this...
If we can make that work...
How does that work?
That would be... Can you hear up there? You're from here?
Can you even hear me?
I just wanna make sure this is working.
Not from my own speaker.
If I talk with my mic off. Uh, if anybody on the council, on the, uh, dials thinks about, well, I won't say what they think about, but we're on television, live streaming, so be careful as you chew.
Let's try that now. Does it work any better?
Could be a little louder.
How's that sound? Is that good? Or would you prefer me use the stationery mic? How fine you are.
Trying to, can you hear us back? Yeah, the other ears, but I think we're okay.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank all of you for allowing us to be here. Um, you folks are really going through an exciting time, and this is an exciting community of Virginia, um, because, you know, from our perspective, the Texas Travel Industry Association is always very rewarding to be in a community that gets what this industry does, gets the importance in a sense. Um, and we're, we're excited to be a part of that with you. You've got a lot of decisions to make as you move forward on this issue of hog tax, about what you can do with that, the way you can spend it. Uh, it certainly is a real fundamental driver of growing your local economy, growing your community, building this city into what you want it to be, as the mayor said, over the next 10 years and within beyond. Um, and if you go with current election projections over a 10-year period, I think that's pushing somewhere between 20 and 30 million dollars, as you mentioned, and if we do this right, it'll be even more. Uh, and so that's, that's a really good thing. Um, we are delighted to know that travel tourism is an important part of your community, and again, as I said, grateful to be here tonight, to be a part of this, perhaps participation and input into your thought process. Uh, the first thing I'd like to do, however, before I get into my power conference session, which we prepared, I'd like to introduce two of the folks I brought with me tonight. Um, and I think one of the things you need to know is, there's been talking, this whole discussion about creating a destination marketing organization is one of the possibilities, um, that you might be looking at. I have presidents running the largest DMO of the state, the Texas Tourism Office, working for Governors Bush and Governors Perry, uh, so I bring that unique perspective with me. Um, and for all you folks out here, we're gonna talk, I, I may slip into a lot of acronyms. DMO, you hear that word used a lot? That's Destination Marketing Organization. I apologize to the data for using the acronym. I would like to introduce Diane Bays. Diane Bays is our, uh, Senior Vice President for Membership, but Diane also brings a wealth of DMO experience in her background as well. She's been the Executive Director at the McKinney Texas Convention and Industry Bureau, Executive Director at the Hillsboro Texas Convention and Industry Bureau, and Director of Tourism Sales for the Manhattan, Kansas CDB. Um, so that's the perspective that we, uh, this team has been working with you folks. Also, Mr. Bob Phillips. He doesn't look like Texas Country Reporter. This is the real Bob Phillips. And Bob, you, you've started the Brightline CBB up in the metro place, experienced there, Irving, the Irving CBBs, Addison CBB, and even has a lot of private industry, sort of, classic attractions in the past. So Bob brings very well around his CBB management experience, DMO management experience, as well as private industry attractions. Uh, so that's the team that we have here with you today. Um, we're not exactly unfamiliar with this discussion. Um, let's go right into the presentation. A little bit about who the Texas Travel Industry Association is. We are an umbrella organization for travel and tourism in the state of Texas. Our membership is comprised of approximately 750 businesses, organizations, public sector, private sector. You can see from this pie chart exactly what our membership looks like. It's notable to mention the single largest sector of our membership are DMOS. Uh, that being said, it's still asking the third what our membership is. We have, we have, uh, DMOS, the CDB changers, the PDCs, attractions, what we call allied members, those suppliers to our property. We have someone that's, uh, buying advertising from for tourism, that would fit into that category, the allied member. Accommodations, government nonprofits, transportation, and then we have individual members. We represent, our membership represents what this industry looks like in the state of Texas. Our mission statement, I'm very proud of this mission statement, and I'm even more proud of it tonight, because what we strive to do is to help our members and to help the state improve the quality of life in the state by strengthening travel and tourism. I think that's very much what you folks are doing right now. We're looking at how you do that for your own community. Our members have a variety of priorities, things that we focus on. Number one thing that we focus on for our members is advocacy, or almost we call that lobbying, if we can use that, but that's not what advocacy in and of itself means to us. Advocacy also means coming to a group of folks like you guys, and putting together good level policies at the local level, the regional level, the state level, everything that helps this industry. That's what our main industry, our main priority is with our members. But we also do a lot of education programs, networking, research, communications, and marketing. So it's, we're a pretty robust organization, types of value can we provide back to our members. Then want to give you a little bit of a look at what our membership looks like, who comprises our membership. I'm not going to show you 750 logos, I promise you, but I will show you two or three slides. Texas Commercial Airports Association, that first line of these logos is mentioned, that represents air travel in this, in this state. That's important for this community, as you well know, we have an airport just right down the road. Texas Commercial Airports Association, Austin, Berkeston Airport is a member of that group. That is a collection of 25 passenger airports in, in the state of Texas. Everything from Colleen to DFW, they're all in the 20. Obviously, the airlines from here. That Texas Patch logo on the left represents the Governor's Office for Tourism Promotion. And then we have the big CBBs, we have an intermediate level CBBs, and CBBs of all sizes, DMOS of all sizes, which is the Frederick's Road. They represent different sizes of cities and different brands and different types of communities. Also amongst our members are the attractions, a core group of what people want to do when they go travel, experiences that they want to have, everything from SeaWorld to the Quilt Museum in La Grange, right down the street. We have all kinds of attractions in this membership. Um, and also a lot of accommodations as well. You see some of the brands, uh, Landry's is a hotel division, which is very active with our membership, West Western, Homeaway, Hyatt, JW Marriott members. And those allied members that we talked about, all of these folks are what we call media suppliers to our industries. So if you want to promote your destination, these are the folks you go to, with the exception of the bottom three, and those are universities. A lot of people forget about the fact that from an education standpoint, the universities play a very important role in the growth of this industry and, and in the development of the industry. We're very proud, we have eight or nine university members in our membership.
Well, not the University of Texas, I guess.
Not the University of Texas. I'm a T6 too.
No, I'm not.
What are you keep working on? Um, in this area, we're very well represented with our membership. As you can tell here in the high places, the Los Highs, I'm a member of Baskerville County, the convention center, uh, Circuit of the Americas, as we mentioned, the airport of Range, Parks and Wildlife. I actually sit on the, uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department State Parks Advisory Committee. So I'm very actively engaged with that, and I understand what the values of state parks for a community particularly small. I want to mention a couple of the programs that our association puts on, because I think they're relevant to tonight's discussion. First and foremost, uh, we put on an event every year called a Travel and Tourism College. We own that event at the Hyatt Los Highs. We bring in about 100 to 150 room nights there for about a week. Uh, we bring in travel professionals from all over the state. This is probably the marquee of travel industry education program in the country, and it runs every given of education that you could possibly conceive that would be relevant to travel and tourism and industry professionals who work in for DMOS, for attractions, for all, all sectors of the industry. We're very happy to grow a relationship with the Hyatt Los Highs, and we're gonna be there through 2018, so we're very happy to maintain that, that relationship as well. Now, a new program that we launched this year, I want to talk a little bit about that one. Texas Travel Industry Association has more DMOS in its membership than any organization in the state of Texas. There is a DMO organization, we have more DMOS in our membership than that organization does. That being said, a lot, when our board met at a retreat, a retreat, it was the private sector members who came to us and said, "We are concerned greatly with what's happening with the state of DMOS in the state. We are concerned about the funding streams, we are concerned about public policies that are affecting tourism promotion in communities all over the state. We need to better educate our tourism, the DMO professionals." Folks like SeaWorld, Six Flags, that were the ones who promised to us, but not the DMOS because the private sector got, so we were really being serviced, and their business operations impacted on what a DMO and our community marketing organization does. So we put together this program, agreed that it was the only kind of this kind in the nation, and I would rather say it was a resounding success in its first year. I think you can see a couple of the comments that we got, "A 130-plus-a-year industry professional, all of the best educational day he had he's ever experienced in his, in his, in the industry." Uh, we also put that program together in coordination with a couple of other organizations who helped us develop a curriculum on it, the Texas Association Convention Industry Bureaus, and the Destination Marketing Association International, which is the national organization of DMOS in the United States. We're very proud about that. That kind of puts together background on TDI, who we are, the credibility that we bring to the title, our real expertise that we go off of, by working with you through this process, and hoping, hopeful, give, hopefully giving you some food for thought as you work through your challenges. I'll, I'll start a little bit about what travel means to Texas. Um, last year, 70 and a half billion dollars was spent in this state by direct travel spending from visitors in Texas. That's non-indused, that's not secondary spending, that is direct travel spending. That spending is a rate generator of all sorts of tax revenues for all sorts of governments. Federal taxes, almost $4 billion resulting from that spending, $3 billion in state taxes, and a little over $1 million in local taxes. The job impacts are pretty significant. 630,000 direct jobs, 470,000 indirect jobs, which means this industry employs about 1.1 million Texans across the state. And one thing that we have to remember about travel and tourism is we delve into this, and as you look at this, the viability of this as an economic driver for your community is, in terms of gross domestic product, this is an export industry. It's a service industry, it's an export industry. That is because you're exporting your attractions to your destination to those visitors who want your community to spend their dollars. Talk to you about the impact of this industry to the state's economy. Travel and tourism is the second largest export industry in Texas in terms of GDP, with the exception of the petroleum industry. Only oil and gas has a bigger GDP impact in this state than travel and tourism. If you look back at the recent recession, you know, Texas was not hit as badly as many of the other states, and one of the main reasons for that is the jobs impact of this industry. A lot of people who were displaced workers from other industries found jobs and traveled and tourism in Texas. So it kept them working, and it helped our economy mitigate the losses that we had, and in many instances, continued to grow. Um, and one important thing that I hope we, we keep in mind as we move through our discussion about the impacts of travel and tourism, not only from the state standpoint, from a local standpoint, is the ROI. What's the return on investment? Cold hard catch, what's the financial return on investment for what you're going to invest in, whatever you want to do in terms of tourism promotion in your city? At the state level, the state tourism office, which has about a $40 million budget, and that money comes from state hotel occupancy tax revenues, that $40 million budget. For every one of those dollars that they spend, they return $7 back to the state in additional tax revenue. It is an equal equal program, it is a self-funding program, and that is the model that I would challenge you to embrace for your local community, because it is the model that works. And to talk about the actual impact of this industry, if not for travel and tourism in Texas, each household in Texas would have paid, paid $840 in additional taxes every year to maintain current level of government services. So what that means is, it is actually other people's money, those visitors who come to our state are actually keeping our, our tax obligations low, case in point, the city of Brighton, Texas. Brighton, Texas is the only community that I know that has more jobs than residents. And the number one industry in Brighton, Texas, is travel and tourism. So when it works, it works really well. And if you look at a trend line, the tax obligation on the citizens, tax rate on citizens in Brighton, Texas, it's on a downward trend. The tax rate in Brighton, I repeat, that's on a downward trend, because all visitors are dollars, the community lowers the property tax rates, they don't have to generate as much a sales tax, they have their own money. So citizens actually are finding their government services are being financed in large part by visitors to their community who are paying those taxes. Let's talk a little bit about what, about travel can mean and does mean to Baskerville. Um, the main thing, the main reason we all embrace travel and tourism in our communities was to improve the quality of life of our citizens. I mean, that's, that's your challenge, that's why you're here, that's why you're engaged in this, with these folks out here, your constituents. Um, so as you look at the process, I would ask you to keep in mind that while it is all about these folks out here, it's even more so about the customers and the travelers who want to bring their community, because they will deliver for you what your constituents need, whether that's in terms of business receipts, job creation, tax revenues, whatever you define, is you want quality of life to be in your community. Those are the things that the tourists will bring, and the travelers will bring. I have some economic impact numbers that we got from the state office. We don't have them for the city of Baskerville, but we do have them for Baskerville County, and we wanted to make sure we shared those numbers with you. We talked about the $70 billion in direct travel spending for the state, for Baskerville County, it's $152 million. There are some 1,800 jobs, industry jobs, in Baskerville County, and I think this is an important after that, say, the average earnings for those jobs is $34,000 a year. That is the state average. I don't know of any town of your size that has average wages per job that meets that state average. Most everybody's is $40,000. Somewhere between the $25,000 and $30,000, which is in my experience with that. So you guys are very well positioned with the kinds of jobs that you have in travel industry standpoint. Um, in the tax revenues, we estimate $3.4 million, industry tax revenues for Baskerville County. You see the variety of lodging tax, and sales taxes there, and property tax. One of those tourism business does well in your community, whether it's a retailer, or it's a hotel, they're gonna be paying property tax, and those visitors actually will spur that growth in their businesses, and they will be paying more property tax under schools. So that's a very important economic impact statement to be made for your community. Now, if you remember, we talked a little bit about the state impact of, of, uh, travel spending and, and the tax debt on households for the state, it was about $800. For every household in the state, travel and tourism lowered that debt obligation, that tax obligation, by about $800. For this county, it's about $427, lower than the state average, which would be, you have a moving rate. So there are some things that you can do from a positive standpoint, developing travel and tourism in the community to help the US public promote the state eventually. And a couple of graphs I want to show you here, just kind of graphically represents what we were talking to you about, how, how common travel and tourism is so important to your communities. You see travelers come in, they arrive here via various transportation modes, whether the automobile, air travel, um, and they, they stay in their communities, whether they come here as tourists, they're here for meetings or conventions, they're gonna stay in camp rooms, they're gonna stay in hotels, they're gonna tour attractions, they're gonna spend money, and it's that money that makes your local economy really work. Now, one of the conversations that you've been having is, is the DMO the right decision to make for Baskerville? I'm sure there are a lot of topics you're gonna be having with the conversation about that. But let's take a little, let's go further into this right quick. One of the things you might consider with the DMO, the reason that does present itself as an opportunity for you, is that it does centralize all of your marketing, can centralize all of your marketing, all of your messaging, all of your brand identity, to want a strong, cohesive communicating message to the consumer. One of the biggest challenges, one of the biggest challenges we always had in the state when I was running the state tourism program, was having to cut through the clutter. We had a $40 million, a pretty big project, but when you look at what California and Florida has, $150 million, you're not cutting through the clutter. So what centralized effort will help you do is to help you in the fragmentation that you may be experiencing in communicating to your customers. Um, and also provides much more strategic focus, and you can actually determine what your important outcomes are for that, and what you determine investments. Um, so when you are effectively promoting to your visitors, you will see an increase in your visitation, and of course, that will precipitate respending, which generates more jobs for more activity in your community. Um, if the, if the DMO is the way you want to go, there are, what we believe, several benefits to having a Destination Marketing Organization. Uh, one of them we just talked about is centralizes the, the marketing efforts in a community, and will strengthen and unify your community vision. You have one community vision, one community mission, one community strategy. It can improve the efficiency of overall operations, marketing efforts, some tax dollars, you get economy scales, uh, various ways that, uh, you have a much better operation than those aren't. Uh, we talked about it as one primary voice to communicate with a consumer, consumer understands who you are, what your brand is, and what Baskerville means in the way the travel experience. There's improved accountability, um, and it might even observe the community and will spur economic growth. So we have a couple of process, but there's a process here that we want to recommend to you. Um, if you... If you decide that the DMO is the direction you want to go. Before we do that, no matter what you do with the way your money is allocated today, and I understand there's about twelve, thirteen different groups that are getting the DMO money, you may decide to continue on. That's your decision, you have to make that. But I will tell you right now, the best marketing effort I believe that you have going on is the DMC agreement, the agreement that you have with the Bassdrop Marketing Corporation. So in this discussion, this is going to take some time for you guys to sit through and to work towards, if you want to do a DMO, if you don't want to do a DMO, it's going to take some time. So, in the meantime, while that process is going, I would suggest to you that you look at continuing that DMC agreement that you have. You can determine obviously what you think the appropriate funding level is for that. But I would not, that is one thing I put me strongly about, is that that is the anchor, probably attraction and combination in this city. So it's the most important tourist attraction that you've got going right now. So I think you would be able to short side and not continue that, at least on a temporary basis. And decide how do you want to approach this DMO or other opportunities you have. But regardless, we think there are some suggested steps that you can take, you should take, in this whole overall community discussion, about what to do with your hot packs and what the DMO is. We think there are about six steps here that need to be taken, and just a couple of things that need to paramount your thought processes, you proceed down this path that you decided to go down. The benefits of the strategic planning process is, as we mentioned earlier, you get one unified community plan with a single vision, mission, goals, objectives, and measurable outcomes. Everybody in the community is on the same boat, okay? You get all this body, and you have some one shared community vision. As you move forward through it, I think one thing everyone has to remember is, your use of the hot packs has to apply to the hotel occupancy tax law, we'll get into that in a little bit. But that's one thing that should be kind of your guiding principle, your compass as you move through, every expenditure has to be served with legal criteria. We think it's very important, and I think it's absolutely essential, that you do a community assessment to see where you're positioned as a community right now. You get a lot of stakeholder input, community input into the process. I think a SWOT analysis is very important in developing a strategic plan, and then you need to look at some of the options that are available to you. If you choose to go down the DMO path, there are several options that you could look at. And then if you decide to go with a DMO, having that DMO develop its own strategic plan is paramount to this. First off, let's talk about hotel occupancy tax law. There is this two-step test, basically I'm going to paraphrase here, but you have to promote the hotel convention business in your city and tourism, you have to promote tourism and promote the convention and hotel business. That's the first part of the setup. The second step is, there's nine different categories where the money can be spent, every expenditure has to fit into one of these categories. So that's how the occupancy tax has to be used. I'm going to get into all the details of all of these unless there are questions or anything like that, but for sake of brevity tonight, that's kind of your guiding principle. And obviously, you can use the occupancy tax to establish a destination marketing organization. A community assessment, we believe, is very important to success and a good first step. Regardless of which direction you choose to go, the future of using your hot packs in this community. And it takes a very honest, hard, objective look at what your travel and tourism assets are in your community right now. And it's not what you think's great, it's what the consumer thinks is, it's what the traveler thinks will be great. How does what you have in the way of tourism assets match up to what the fourth bullet is, the potential consumer market is? There's some research out there that's available for you to look at, and it will help you understand what traveler preferences are, what they like to do when they travel, the experiences that they want, the kind of experiences that they want to look at and enjoy. Those are the kinds of things that you have to do in a community assessment. You have to look at your current hot pack's revenues and distribution, obviously, see how those things fit into what you believe your overall goal and objective are. The proximity, I think, in a community assessment is very important, particularly in this community's situation, because geography can be everything, location, location, location. You guys have so much advantage when it comes to location. I mean, you reside on the hip of Austin, Texas, which has about 1.5 million people. And then you have within, terms of marketing, we deal with what we call tiers. Tier one is a 250 mile radius. Put a pin in the middle of the map where you are, tie a string, and draw a circle, 250 miles. Your 250 mile radius includes forward, it includes Dallas, it includes Waco, it includes Rockville Station, it includes Houston, it includes San Antonio, it includes Austin. You've got some ten, twelve, fifteen million people. You have to keep on efficient. You're very well positioned, regardless of what you decide to do, as far as what a potential travel market offers for you. And then you need to look at what your potential meetings might be. When you've got this facility right across the street, you'd probably like to better than it's generating a little more revenue than what it's doing. And there's a great way to do that, I can look at what the meetings' potential is. They have events like Southeast, Southwest in Austin all the time, but oftentimes they'll do outside events. You do look at the scene, you position in order to do some of those things. There are other large groups, I mean, Austin is, you know, ground zero for state agencies. State agencies do retreats, corporate retreats, corporations do corporate retreats, I mean, there's just a big sea of things that you can look at to see how well this community is situated to take advantage of the meetings and the group market that's there, convention market for your facility. And then brand awareness is something that you need to, you also take a look at. That may require a little bit of research, but you need to understand how much equity your brand has, Bassdrop, has to the consumer. Are they familiar with Bassdrop? Are they familiar with Los Angeles? Are they more highly familiar with any of the other groups that are around them? Because if you decide you're going to establish a DMO, you're going to want a brand identity, and that will help you begin to develop what that identity would mean to the consumer. Stakeholder input. And I believe this may be, this may actually be the most important element of the process that we're talking to you today about, because it will help you determine what your community tourism needs are and who can prioritize those, and those will come organically through what we call primary stakeholders and secondary stakeholders, traditional, non-traditional stakeholders. Traditional stakeholders will represent those who actually accept dollars from tourism. It could be hotels, it could be your retailers, it could be your restaurants, it could be Buc-E's down the street, it could be your gas station. And then your non-traditional stakeholders, they're very well established, those groups who are un-electrical, media companies that you may be buying with, media with if you're advertising your destination. And you need some public representation, because you're building something that's here to serve your community. So you want to make sure that you have a proper representation from all of these stakeholders and that you understand exactly what the community needs are, what this council and the city needs are. There's a variety of ways to do that, you can do surveys to glean that information. We are very familiar with and have great success with a process called a nominal group technique. I don't want to be huge, but maybe with those, but if you've been in a meeting where there's a lot of sticky notes put on a wall, that's not a little group technique. That's what that is. Your grant, obviously gave over that, but we have a big name for sticky notes. Anyway, that's very important to your process. And SWOT analysis, and this is very important too, because you're going to do your SWOT analysis based upon a lot of the information that you gleaned already from the first two elements of this. But you need to have, make sure that you have the right players from those stakeholder groups participating in your SWOT analysis. And it will help you understand your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It will help you assess and prioritize what your strengths are, your internal strengths, those things that you have control. And the same thing with your weaknesses. It is a very cleansing exercise when you go through it, and you do it the right way, because everybody has warts and everybody has diamonds, and it will come out through those first two elements. And then the opportunities and threats, and particularly, I think, the threats are the ones that we are most, sometimes we don't do as well a job with as what we could do, but I mean, there are things like consumer trends, economic conditions, industry trends that are out there. I mean, how well positioned is this community to engage the traveler of today? The traveler of today goes destination searching, they do trip planning, and they've been purchasing on mobile technology devices, okay? I mean, you have to, and cities are becoming mobile-driven cities, there's a mobile experience that happens when someone travels, everybody's digital. And we have this whole generation of millennials coming up behind us, I'm the baby boomers, my time is living, hot stick and away, okay? But the next big wave of consumers is going to come at us, it's going to be these millennials. How well positioned is this community? You know, is that a threat, is that an opportunity for you? Are you positioned well enough for your strengths and any advantage in that, to reach those consumers? That's what this process will help you understand and work with. And then I think you have to define what the role of a DMO is, if that's what you want to do in your community. And there are several organizational options. You can operate one if you want to do a DMO, operate it within your city. There are other examples across the state where the tourism function, the economic development corporation are housed in one office. And there are certain arguments thrown on to that, I think one of the pros is that you get much more synergy between the two offices and the two efforts. You don't provide enough funds, there's still a team effort that goes there. Chamber is a common model in this state, they have tourism promotion, housed in the Chamber of Commerce, and then of course, you could always set up your own independent convention in this, your 501(c)(6) is not far the most common nonprofit method that's available there. All of those have strengths and opportunities related to them, they have pros and they have cons. You're going to have to sit down and look at each of those and see which one best fits this community's needs if you decide you want to go with the DMO method. And I would also recommend a DMO where you think you're headed, benchmark some of the DMOS that are out there. We've done some just initial top line, anecdotal kind of comparison with some other DMOS that are out there. Woodlands was one that we picked. It's hard to find a community like Bassdrop, and that's a good one, because like we talked about, you have this huge population center that you're right in the middle of and right next door to. You have a convention center, you have a top-notch resort hotel property just, you know, within your sitting on the tree, TJ. Not many communities in this state are positioned that way, communities of your size. So it was a little hard for us to even initially, first plus ever, find what we call a concept community for you to compare yourself with. We looked at the Woodlands, we looked at Bernie, they have a resort property, the Woodlands has a resort property. We looked at Kerrville, we looked at, not Kerrville, it's only a million, they're not quite the same as you guys, they're not quite the convention facility that you do. But I think you need to look at those in the ways of seeing how they spend, and how they spend their money, because I think best practices is always a great tool for all of us to use, and you can look at, you know, I haven't had any success in my job, it's because I steal you on it, okay? You got a great idea, I will steal it, I will take it, I will make it mine, that's what I would challenge you to do. So you need, well, you really need to focus on what best fits the needs of this community and best supports the needs and objectives of your overall community strategic plan. You have to look at how you're going to staff it, and then that organization, if you decide to do a DMO, you need to develop its own strategic plan. And talking about strategic plans for DMOS, we did Benchmark with the Woodlands, Fredericksburg CBB, and San Antonio CBB, because we wanted to give you just a little bit of cross-section from some smaller to the very largest. And if you look at all of these, they are very, very similar, and all three of these were very successful CBB models of their own scale. And every one of them talks about, to position the Woodlands as a market, and by developing quality marketing programs that enhance to attract visitors, stimulate economic development. Fredericksburg, to market for annual lifts to be counted as pre-registered, creating a positive impact on the local economy, of all in life. And San Antonio is hardly any different than those. Promote and market San Antonio as pre-registered, leading destination, positively affecting cities' economy. This is one of your best practices for seeing the DMOS, if that's where you decide to go. One of the things we feel very strongly about a DMO is the direction you want to go, a DMO is board, okay? And these boards with the right people on it. Typically, one of the successful models is to have the city council appoint the board, seven to nine members, essentially a very great working size. You can have two types of boards, an advisory board, or a board of directors, a governing board, managing board and directors. That's completely up to you, which one of the models you think will work better, but we do believe a board is absolutely essential, and we do believe a city council involvement, whether it's director involvement, or this council would say, yeah, we want to do a DMO, we're going to have a couple of the members of the council sit on it, so you don't always have to worry about open meetings, you have to work out forums, or you can appoint folks to be your council representatives of the board. We believe a board, particularly populated with the right people, those folks who have industry expertise in your community, who are about expert advice and in work, is a very good for success. I think you can look at this model, it's a timeline here to kind of look, just in what with this process involved. And we think this does not include creating a DMO, that's where you decide you want to go, that's a whole other process. You have to create a nonprofit, there's organizational structures that have to happen there and all that. That would probably take another, I would plan six months for that, but if you decide you want to do that, you can begin that process somewhere within this six month like that. What is your, what's your budget cycle?
October, September.
October, September, that's pretty common. Yeah, you can probably, you can probably pull that off in about another twelve months, if that's the routing setup that you want to do. But that kind of gives you phasing in the different elements of this, the time that we think that it would take to make this happen. Mayor, council members, that concludes my presentation. We are here to answer any questions, any insight, any suggestions, or anything of explanations that you may need, of course, and again, thank you for letting us talk.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, your colleagues, for what you've done and what you're about to do, which I think will be answer some questions. Thank you all for coming down, as I've already thanked you. Very concise and complete, as far as I can tell, and you did what you told me on the phone. So let me open the door for council members to ask questions, I think that might be the first thing for us to do, clarifications and things, draw experts out. I, let me start with one that I've been asked several times. The cost of doing a town like ours, the cost of having a DMO is, I assume, mostly relies on professional staff, and you didn't mention that, and you talked about board, but I'm sort of imagining the professional staff, I mean, lots of ways we go, if it's a city department, then it's staff under the city manager and so forth, and it's like, if the model is an economic development corporation, it's the executive director and other staff members and so forth. Any ballpark figure about what it would take to sufficiently run a DMO and do what needs to be done, for a town our size?
I think that's a, we can be here all night, so let me take it from a little bit different perspective. Depends on what you want to do, okay? If you want to set it up as an office in the city, then you're going to have an economy of scale there that you don't have to duplicate some of the other models. So let's look at the city office versus an independent 501(c)(6). 501(c)(6), I argue for some, is exactly the best way to go. However, for smaller cities with smaller budgets, you have to really look at that, because you're going to now be duplicating HR costs, you're going to be duplicating the accounting and administrative services, they call it, and you're going to have to recreate some of the bureaucracy with an independent 501(c)(6) that will not have to be created in your own city possession. Another advantage to a 501(c)(6) is, this is an industry that moves fast, you know, because just look at the acceleration of technology in our world today, and this industry has to be responsive to that technology. I'm a 23-year career bureaucrat, bureaucracy sometimes just does not move fast enough for us. And also, case deals in cities, well, you will find at some point in time, that will be a hindrance to you, but that's just the nature of these. So to try to answer your question, I think we need to do some more benchmarking with some of those cities, and we finally need offsets for you. Do you guys remember how many of those cities always saw staff? Say the Woodlands or Kerrville?
Kerrville has five.
Kerrville has five.
I think Kerrville's the one happening.
They're both just about happened.
Yeah, just off the top of my head, I'm just thinking about staff and the way we do this synergy, we have a We have a, our economic development corporation utilizes our city staff in a lot of ways, finance, financial department, that sort of thing. And I'm not positive our incomes don't very similar. And so there's a, you know, there's, there's a potential model there. Obviously, we know how to do city departments. Something, I guess it could be just a hundred percent totally separate if we wanted to do that, but that would...
That's one of your options.
Yeah.
But I mean, again, if you've got a model there already with your EDC where they are, lack of the better phrase, borrowing some of your administrative structure.
Rent it.
Rent it, that's a better way.
Absolutely.
That's a model that can work too, so maybe there's just a myriad of models that can work. But I think one of the challenges that I think you're going to have is being located this close to Austin, which is a technology center, which is a government center, which is an education center. We find this is a struggle in our association. You have to pay people more than you do in other parts of the state. You've got to get good people and keep good people. Your benefit structure has to be competitive, your salary structure has to be competitive. So I think that's going to be something that you're going to find regardless of the model that you may want to pursue, that's going to be something you're going to have to consider.
Mr. Teal, based upon the mayor's questions and your presentation, it appears that maybe one of the very initial steps that also will help, as you go through it, answer these questions is a development of a strategic plan is where we are today and where we want to be, the steps we have to take to be there. Is that fair assessment?
That is correct. That's the first thing, yeah. I would say that's what you have to do. You've got to know what you're starting with.
And now, is that something Texas Travel Industries does for communities?
We can certainly, we can certainly help you with that. Absolutely. We can do it with ourselves and whatever we can.
Kelly? Could you go back to when you were talking about the different structures? Give us some more examples of cities that, that are structured with the DMO as part of the city structure versus 501(c)(6), specific city names?
Lee Grandery is a city house, Martin was San Antonio's.
That's within the city structure as a city?
That's correct. It is a city function.
Okay.
Correct. Now, San Antonio, I can tell you right now, they're having a very heated discussion, heated is not the right word, but a very rigorous discussion in their own community about is that the right model for them? In fact, it's an outlier in a lot of other cities of that size. But it's not uncommon to have some of the more mid to smaller sized cities house those DMO functions within their own city.
How about some examples of cities that use a 501(c)(6) that are our size?
I can speak on that. Now McKinney is not the same population, but I manage that part of that DMO. And when I started, we were in the Chamber of Commerce. And in some cities in Texas, the Chamber, Chamber CDB works very well. It didn't work as well in McKinney. And so we were set up a little differently. I think Irving is set up this way as well. But we were contacted by the city. We were a 501(c)(6). But we were contracted by the city, much like economic development, community development and airport development. So we were not necessarily one that were charted, but we did receive city benefits. We worked directly with IHS Department, the city manager's office, but we had a council appointed board. And so we did have city council members who came to our, our board meetings and so they were, they did have a presence there. But that, that is how we were set up. And it really worked in, without, we had nine members. And the whole nine members, five of them served in different areas of the travel tourism industry in McKinney and then the other four were citizens. And I think the majority also had to live in the community.
So your business is a contract business with cities? Is that, what, what business do you work? Is this who you work for?
I work for TTI. But I was in the, I was, I was the CDB director in McKinney.
Okay, so TTI doesn't actually contract to different cities to, to run the DMO?
Certainly not.
Okay.
All they do is, I mean, I help with the strategic plan from what I gathered and the framework. And I think what Mr. Teal has shown, which I think is to me the critical element, is I think going through the, the process of developing a strategic plan will at the end decide which is the best model that will work for Bastrop.
Sure. I just didn't understand where you were coming from.
And I hope you guys, when you ask for us can you name cities our size, you guys are such a special case. I mean, you've got so many on here that a comp city is going to be really difficult. You're going to have to do kind of composite of what a comp city looks like from here. A little personal story, I'm some land there around Wilder, Texas, just around 40 miles south of here, where I'm going to retire. Bastrop was on my list, but Wilder was just a little more remote. Anyway, if I have my home improvement project, I come to Bastrop because I can come up, was it 304? And that road across the 71 and on one side I have a Home Depot, on the other side I have all those. I don't know any other community this size that has that going. And, you know, you've got a Starbucks here. You know how many times I've traveled to Houston from Austin and stopped at that Starbucks? And you, you've got a critical mass here of things that tourists like. And so, I mean, your budget for a town of your size is pretty extraordinary. I mean, it really is. And you've got such great potential here. We'll do what we can to help you find more information regarding that, but I make no promises because it's such a unique, you're such a unique city.
You make a good point about the Starbucks. And this past Saturday about 2:30, the drive-through was queued up 14 hours ago. A counter.
Y'all did the city manager's counter. I assume that you've looked at the current structure that we have here, the tiered approach, where we have the first tier being our commitments to the BMC, Hyatt and to the convention center. And then second tier, that goes out to other draws to our community. How do you organize a DMO? Does DMO dole out all the hot funds, some of the hot funds? Are there different structures for doing that? How do you get by and buy all these other organizations that are kind of clawing for their share of the pie?
There are different ways to structure that. One of them is in the way San Antonio works is with their city hot tax abruptly, a third of it goes toward their convention center. A third of it goes toward their CDB office. And a third of it goes to these other groups out there who receive occupancy tax. So you can have a, a independent CDB that comes before city council in our leasehold funding, just like everybody else does. So to your model, I mean, you can already have, you can say, we're going to allow this much or appropriate this much for our city-owned convention center. But if you have a city office, you can appropriate that to the city office, which is a more of an independent group, you can allow them to appropriate that just as well. So I think in the structure that you've got, basically what you have is priority systems, I understand, and what your, what your allocation of hot tax is. That's a decision you have to make. That's why I think this process that we recommended to you will better inform you on how to make that decision. And do you want to continue with that existing structure or is there another priority system that you'd like to look at?
Do you, hey, your best?
Yeah, do you know any cities that actually contract services to run their DMO?
There's a couple of different ways you can contract services. Now, a lot of cities will contract with the Chamber of Commerce. New York City has done that, right? And they'll come forward to the city council to give their appropriation. I think it's a two-year or three-year budget that they give. There is another model where they actually will hire a company to come in and run the CDB function for a city employee. The only city owned one in the state that does this correctly are wrong is self-asking. There are businesses that are out there that are in the, that are a lot of businesses to do CDB management, destination marketing, organization management. So they bring in their own employees, they run it for them, city will pay a fee to them and then appropriate money to do some of the, the corruption.
Let me ask you, Chris? Let me ask you to put on your retired welder hat for a second.
That's a hand I love, I come up.
You come see us, I'll buy you the coffee. Let me go, let me get the tie machine and go forward. So you're out of your, your job. So somebody says to me on Main Street tomorrow, well, sure, you invited this DMO expert down here. He tells you all about DMOs. Isn't there anything else you do? So what are the options besides maybe what we're doing that would be different from a DMO?
My initial reaction to that is I don't know of the option. And the one is not coming on. Now, and then we call a DMO a city office, a DMO there. And I believe, I believe Grandery has fragmented theirs out within city offices, which is a recommendation I will not make to you because I don't think that pays search or interest. But there are a couple of cities, Grandory has done that. I don't recommend that to you at all. I mean, if you want to have a city department that promotes, that is dedicated to promoting travel tourism.
Even a city department. A city department does that. A city department would work, by whatever name would be like that you've been talking about with the DMO. So you described it that way.
It's just another kind of...
Oh, and the same thing, whatever we call it, it was structured like a Bastrop Economic Development Corporation would be still the same thing. It's the board aspect.
The board aspect, I think.
Would, would be the real key. And then, so let me return then to, when I asked the question about cost, you, I assume there would need to have to be professionals and executives and staff and that sort of thing with any business. However, we said that we'd have to have professionals to run this. Or is it possible to do it on a totally voluntary basis?
No, sir, I would not recommend that to you at all, on a voluntary basis at all. You want accountability of whoever is in this building, it's stealing the game, obligation back to volunteers, have a habit of walking.
And obviously, there are various ways to have reporting relationships depending on how we structure it, okay? Got a question here. Did you look at all, and maybe this is outside the scope of what you were asked to do or what you normally do, but I'd like an outsider's opinion if you, if you got an opinion on our convention center and that is, do you have an idea why our convention center is not more used than it is? Do you think we have a marketing issue, a facility issue, a location issue, or have you looked at that at all or have an opinion on that?
We've talked a little bit about it. And I haven't looked into the operations of the convention center. Let me qualify that, on what I'm about to say with that statement. I think you have some inherent challenges with, with the convention center. Using the occupancy tax to promote your convention center and your hotels, okay? That, that what you need to do. So you need to have overnight stays in your hotels. It appears to me the community does not have the critical mass of hotel rooms in proximity to the convention center to have that type of beauty. Ideally, you need foot traffic. Ideally, you need a hotel across the street or down the block or somewhere. I don't think the city has that, number one. And then number two, I'm just not certain exactly what the focus is of the convention center and its marketing efforts. And that's not criticism, I'm just not entirely aware of what's going on. I think your biggest challenge in running groups here to do multiple day events as far as meetings and conventions go is that you do lack that downtown facility. All of that being said, your convention center is in direct competition with this property that sits about 15 miles outside of the city called the Los Palmas recently. So that's another thing as you move forward with this that you're going to have to look at. How do these two coexist? How do they differentiate the two consumer group so that we are not fishing in St. Paul or Robin Hall or Paypier with the convention business?
Mike, didn't we pay to have a convention center before Gary was on council? I'd be interested to see on that.
That'd be very useful. Thank you.
Let me, Kelly, you still going?
No.
Kelly, you got any more questions?
I do have one question. Earlier in your presentation, you recommended that we continue our, our relationship with Bastrop Marketing Corporation. Can you expand on that, why you, why you feel that that's a good idea?
Because they are the major generator of occupancy tax for the city. If you, my, my fear is if you discontinued that, that agreement, you, you will hurt your occupancy tax revenues. Let me, let me tell you a story about the state of Colorado. A few years ago, the state of Colorado, the Iowa State Tourism Research Taxists decided that they were going to abolish their state tourism promotion program, their state DMO. At the time, Colorado was the number one ranked winter resort destination in America. They were open without a DMO office for about five or six years. It never stands, and this has been probably 15 or 20 years, but they have never ranked in the top 20 again. My, my expert opinion, for what it's worth for you guys, is that is probably the anchor brand that you have right now from a major attraction and a major accommodation standpoint. They certainly generate the vast majority, the bulk of, or even the bulk of the occupancy tax revenue that comes into this city. We don't own it, we don't own it, so that's until you decide what you want to do. Now, when you decide how you want to move forward with this, if you want to do a DMO, discussions are back on the table. But I would strongly suggest to you that you look at maintaining that relationship on whatever that shared revenue is. You don't want to lose that because that's the greatest communication that you have with the consumer right now. And in fact, you may look at trying to figure out, let's say I'm working with, with the Hyatt, how do we get some of your folks to experience downtown? What can we do more there? Bring some of the dollars in the day, day per dollar. You're not going to get the nighttime dollars, but if some of the leisure money can be spent downtown, maybe that's a good opportunity.
And Kelly, those are some of the discussions that Kim and I have going on right now. And just to substantiate what Mr. Teal stated, I think if you look at '08 and '09, especially up in the metroplex area, municipalities were cutting their workforce as much as a third because of the economic downturn. That didn't happen here. And one of the major reasons that didn't happen here is that economic engine out there was chugging all along with the support that we provided it.
I have more of a comment, I guess. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here because it's been a very interesting presentation and you've got some very good points for us. I think that it's something that we'll be studying very carefully. You pointed out some good things that we need to discuss even more so, and I'm sure we will as we continue to work on this development of a DMO, if that's the option that we choose. The fact that the Hyatt and our convention center, while working together, are also competition, is a very interesting, you know, discussion I think that we'll be having. Also, the fact that not having a hotel in our direct proximity downtown is something that we've long talked about. And I think that that is another marketing tool that will be very important for us to try to work toward about in developing us as a destination. And those are some good points that I hope that we'll discuss even further. And I just wanted to thank you for bringing those forward. And I hope that we'll get a chance to utilize some of this information to move forward. But it's, I mean, we, we have bed and breakfasts downtown that are very close to walking distance to here. But as far as a hotel that's downtown, we don't have that as what we do. And I think if we utilize some of the bed and breakfasts that we have that are within walking distances and all the things, that would help us so much.
Again, from my perspective, the more things that we can do to strengthen our relationship with the Hyatt, the more we're going to see a higher return on those dollars being spent.
Dave, would you mind, just let me try to go through your process here. Stay, stay close by. Sit down for a minute. I want to use Doc's comment to segue into, from questions to, do you have any comments that you want to make, discussion you want to have at this point? Are we still sorry?
Are we still assarving? I'm fine for us to do assarves, that's what I'm doing. But I want to hear that, and then I've got another suggestion if we don't have much discussion. Gary?
Could we get some public input at this point? Get some questions?
That's my next question. Do you have any, besides that, anything else you want to talk about? Anybody? My suggestion is to look kind of for nods or wags that we take until 7:30 and just let folks ask questions from the audience, maybe some we haven't thought of. Is that, that's why I want you to stay close by. I'm thinking, I'm seeing some pretty affirming views. Let me ask people in the, the audience, or whatever we call it, the gallery, our citizens, if you've got something to say or a question to ask, would you raise your hand? Well, that'd be easy. That'd be easy. George, okay, I got two of y'all. Georgie, let's go with you first, and then please come up, identify yourself. I won't make you fill anything out, but please clearly identify yourself, and we'll spill in, go see the best we can.
George, let's go with Georgie. Good evening, council, thank you for this opportunity. I'm glad that Councilwoman Jill...
Gilligan.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Raised the question about the recommendation for the DMO and maintaining that relationship. And I guess my secondary question, because it was the first thing that came to mind for me, is to say more about what it means to have that relationship. But I think the secondary piece is to provide guidance about how to maximize that relationship, that that relationship has not fully served us in the way that we had hoped. How do we re-envision the relationship so that we can get from it what we need? Does that make sense?
I think I would just say that while we're talking, that, you know, the only, the only bottom line we have is, we're not going to use sales tax or landlord tax or any other kind of tax besides hot tax to pay for that convention center across the street. So it absolutely comes first, and all of us are on the hook with the citizens for that commitment. So we, we go back to Mayor Locke, maybe not Mayor Locke, but at least Mayor Scott in regard to that commitment. So that's our starting point. I think everything else is up for grabs. Now, Seem, was it you who was, who's handling? Please come forward. Just, Debbie, you can be Debra or Debra, whichever one you want to do, but tell us who you are.
Debra Johnson. My observation, just in listening, is, you know, we have X number of dollars in the pot. If we leave, leave the level of giving to DMC the same, if we leave the level of support of the convention center the same, if we have a DMO that has, has staff, is there anything left over? Are there any dollars left over for the marketing?
I think it's a good question, and I think that assuming that I do have the backing of the council in regard to the fact that we're not going to, our first draw is going to be the convention center, you know, the question is what comes next and how we do it? How does the level of the Master Marketing Corporation fit into that? This is a Z in question. So I think you're right to ask that question because we're any better off than we were to start with if we did that. So, good question, and that's on the list.
As, because as one of those shareholders with a retail business, it's critical for having tourism come in, is the organizations that have been clawing for the dollars have at least been using those dollars for advertising the city, maybe not as effectively as we could have if we'd been working together, but will we lose those dollars by not restructuring across the board?
Yeah, and then those are, that's an absolute critical question. Were there other comments or questions, Ross? Press getting everything they need, do you? They, oh my gosh, you are? Oh yeah, I bet you'll call someone else tomorrow. We, do I hear Doc?
One other thing, too, that Mr. Teal had mentioned, and I think is critical in our discussion, is about the marketing vision, having a unified, having a unified vision. And I think that kind of addresses what Deb was saying, too, with us working together to make sure that we provide a unified vision of Master. Right now, we're kind of disjointed because I think several organizations and groups, everyone's going in different directions, and it's kind of confusing out there to a lot of people, just what this destination is all about. I mean, we've got a very clear-cut destination, and we've got people coming here because of all of the attractions and the things that are happening. But I think if we unify our vision with our marketing in a better way, we can, we can have more bang for our money, in a sense. And I kind of like that idea that was pointed out earlier in the presentation.
Kelly?
I'd like to ask Mr. Teal another question, if I could. Would you mind explaining in detail exactly what functions a DMO handles?
The easy answer to that is, a DMO handles everything that's statutorily empowered to do. And the reason I answer it that way is, they can promote, they can do a meeting business, they can do advertising, they can do events. They can do what we call marketing and sales. There's a wide variety of things they can do. Through the discussion about the convention center and the DMO, I would suggest to you those two need to be locked still together, what they're doing in promoting or destination because both of them are destination promotion, destination marketing activities, just different target audiences.
So can you, can you envision, I'm sorry, can you envision the DMO running the convention center, or at least running the marketing for the convention center as well as the regional marketing?
I think we've had models that are out there like that, where a DMO is charged with marketing the convention center. And when I worked at the state, we had group, group meeting clubs, and we'd go out and market at various convention centers across the state to meetings, groups of conventions. So yeah, I mean, that's obviously something that a DMO can do for you. The beauty about this is, as long as you stay within the confines of the law, you want to, you want to do, you've got it if you have it.
To piggyback on what Councilman Jackson said as well about the need for hotel proximity of the convention center, would a DMO also somehow fill the role of helping to bring a hotel to that area, or is that something that just goes to the economic development in the city? How does the DMO work with those organizations?
There are people who have been slinging arrows at me, so they're out on the street. Okay. I'm going to tell you from based upon my experience, your EDC needs to be bringing that hotel in, working together with your DMO. Your DMO's four competencies that they have, destination marketing organization, that's the four competencies that they have. As far as business recruitment and all of that, they can be an assistance to that. And I would, I would suggest that the economic development folks really probably have more expertise in doing that than what a DMO, marketing professional.
Becky, did you want to come up?
Becky Womble of the Master of Chamber. And it's my understanding that at this time of year is when decisions for advertising will be made for the following year. So I'd like to know what the current status is of the contract with Master Marketing Corporation that's set to expire regularly first.
We have an expiration date of May 31st. Jim, Greg, and I are in negotiations on that contract, and I look to the council within the next 30 days. We, Mike's working, we, council turned down an opportunity to try to extend it for the rest of next year, but maybe Mike will come up with something different that the council likes better. I want to say, we're always glad to have a lot of folks visiting us and speaking, I appreciate that very much. It's who and what we are. Very pleased to know that one of the main ingredients of the suggestions tonight, which I hope we can get a copy of your presentation, so all our notes more clearly, is engagement with everybody involved, all the stakeholders, all the citizens. And I think that the process we're going to engage in over the next months absolutely will, will take advantage of the great wealth of talent and thoughts that we have in this community. I'm also aware that Collins got us, he told me live streaming, which means somebody's out there maybe watching us on a computer. Maybe we can work out a way where people can text in their questions one of these days, see how that works. These young guys can probably figure that out. We're working on that. No, look at that, he's way ahead of us. We now are going to adjourn from our workshop session back into a regular session, and I will say to Mike, I can't even imagine if we have anything worthy of it. Somebody's pointing to somebody. Mayor Scott, you're a little late, but I'm going to let you come up because of your high distinguished service to our community, and besides, I haven't quite finished what I was saying. Yeah, please tell us who you are.
Tom Scott, I've been following this process before. I have a question about consultants of the evening. We've had the, we've been with Hyatt for eight-plus years. Much of the discussion that I've heard is kind of like it's an either-or decision going forward. Have we not built up, has not the Hyatt, the city built up residual value over this time? Have we had the same model moving forward?
Thank you, that's a good question.
Well, make sure I'm clear. When we say the same model, are we talking about the revenue sharing model that you have now?
Yeah, and also the, the control of it, those kinds of things.
Right. I, I think that's something you and the Hyatt can work at. I mean, I, I would, my recommendation to you is, whatever model you think works best for your city and for, and for the Hyatt, use a partnership. That's the model you should be pursuing. My only concern is that, you don't want to turn that water faucet off, okay? Because it's bringing a lot of occupancy tax to your city. And that, that's a big concern because once you lose market share, it is incredibly hard to get it back. It's incredibly. So this is something that you need to be, I advise you is to be very smart about it, be very cognizant about it. Because when you start back, you're backpedaling with the consumers and the brand identity and branding, it's so, the marketplace is so competitive, there is so much out there for consumers to, you begin to lose your competitive position. So whatever the numbers are that you guys think works best for the city, I mean, that's obviously a decision you have to make, but in my mind at least, it generates so much occupancy tax, you actually run the risk of losing some of that revenue coming to you if that profile of marketing, that exposure of marketing for your city begins to vanish.
Thank you very much. As I finish my sentence, that we're returning from our workshop session, I wanted to say to Mike, I'm sure we don't have anything for executive session. We, do we have any action that the council members see we need to take? I can't think of anything. There'll be an item on my city manager's report following this up next Tuesday night, and maybe you'll have some suggestions for me, and I'll make sure that we get a copy of the presentation and get it to y'all so you can study it before next Tuesday night. Want to thank the public for coming tonight. This is a good turnout for a meeting for us, and it's glad that so many people are interested. And again, I can't thank y'all enough for taking time out of your busy schedules to be out here and share with us what you've learned over the years. Let me just put what we're doing tonight in context. We've, we've heard some very wise people lay out for us a process that's going to take a matter of months. We are engaged in, I don't know how many, absolutely critical major ventures in this community right now. We're, I've been saying since I was running for mayor that what's going to impact us for the next, I don't know how long, and has been impacting us all along, is the transitional nature of this community. We're growing from a little bitty tiny place into a town of 20,000, and there's every institution, everything we do is impacted by that need for transition and transformation. We're really hitting it right now. It's hitting our city manager and his staff, but it doesn't mean we can slow down and let go of any of those. We just have to learn to work smarter and harder and engage the community in ways that will help us get through this. It's going to take a while to do all the many things that we're working on, but we have to do them for the future and for the sake of our citizens. So I hope you all stay with us. If I can put my preacher hat on for a second, keep the city manager in your prayers because he has a lot on his plate. We expect him to deliver on all those, and get his staff cracking on everything that we need to do. We need your patience, your tolerance, and above all, your participation in what we're doing going forward on all these tasks. We'll figure out a way to work on this one and make it work in a timely fashion. It won't be easy, but it will be productive, and it will help the future as we look down the road. Anybody want to move, adjourn, adjourn? Kay says we should adjourn. Gary seconds, and Doc likes us to call the rules, so I am. Would you do that?
Councilmember McInally? Councilmember Sheen? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilligan?